Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On that, the City of Longview, I'd like to welcome everyone to the January the 21st, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for the City of Longview, Texas. I'll now call it to order. At this time, we're going to have the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to be given by Commissioner Manny Alanez. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day today. We thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We pray that you guide us in making these decisions for the good of our community and to honor you. Thank you for the, uh, everyone that has come today to support us, and we pray that you watch over us as we go home tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the December the 17th, 2024 minutes. Commissioners, have you had an opportunity to look over them? Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The next item is citizen comment. I do not have any cards that were filled out concerning citizen comment, so we will go to item number six, the consent agenda. The consent agenda, the items on there are plaits that meet the requirement of the City of Longview subdivision ordinances. They will be approved with one vote unless any member of planning and zoning or anyone who's in the audience, the public, or any applicant would like one of those removed. Is there anyone who would like one of the items of the consent agenda removed for further discussion? Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A move we approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Moving on to the regular agenda, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to hear all the pertinent testimony of those in support of and those in opposition of the applications before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public hearings. The second public hearing will be held by the City of Longview on February the 13th. The procedure for the tonight's meeting, first of all, we will hear from the staff, to be followed by the applicant, then the general public, those in support, and then those in opposition. When all sides have spoken, then I will close the public hearing. The matter will be voted on by the commissioner for either approval or disapproval. Angela, number A.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z25-01, filed by the City of Longview, requesting a rezone from multifamily three agricultural and light industrial zoning districts to two-family zoning district for the entire subdivision known as Ray addition and including abstract 205 M Taylor survey tracks nine, 11, and 12, located south of Sabine Street and east of West Loop 281. So, the City of Longview is requesting to rezone these properties seen here on the map. Currently, it is zoned multifamily three agricultural and light industrial zoning district. Currently, this subdivision, there are several lots in this, within this subdivision, that have single-family homes as well as two-family homes, which is duplexes. And so, staff is initiating a rezone to two-family, which would allow for single-family homes and two-family homes within this area. Rita Drive, Ray Street, Griffin Street, Della Lane, Richardson Street, and Edna Lane are all classified as local streets and are maintained by the City of Longview. This type of development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore, the request does not constitute spot zoning. Be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Angela, as I understand, the, your department is just trying to bring the zoning up to date as far as what, what is actually in there under the new city guidance?
That is correct. We are going through, um, through our city, trying to ensure compliance with these neighborhoods, and so we're looking at neighborhoods and seeing, is the zoning, you know, in place for what's currently there? And if not, you know, staff is initiating rezone requests.
Commissioners, you have any questions? I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Please approach the mic, state your name, your address.
Good afternoon. I'm Carl Whitaker, and I just happen to own one of the, uh, few of the lots over in that area, 1513 Ray Street. And I was mentioning it to one of the ladies out front earlier. I am a little concerned about developing that old area to, to allow individuals to come in and build new homes. And one of my main reasons, and I know you guys probably can't do anything about that right now, there is a flooding problem in there with the existing homes that are already in there. And before I think we approve single families to come in and build new homes, and I think we need to fix the drainage in that area. There's a lot of construction area going in there, or commercial businesses going on in there. We've got the railroad department that's blocking probably 50% of the time when you try to go out one area back to Sabine Street, that railroad track is blocking that road 50% of the time because they're doing a lot of commercial area in there. When you go out back toward the loop, you've got those dump trucks trying to go out to the other direction. That area, that road is, needs to be repaired. There's potholes everywhere off in there. And I just find it hard to believe that we're going to try to change that to single-family homes. And I know there's a lot of vacant lots off in there, but to me, what needs to happen to that area, that area needs to be zoned as commercial zone. It needs to be heavy, commercial. We demolish the houses that are in there and go in commercial zone that whole area and let the individuals that are using that go ahead and increase their business size and buy those vacant lots up out of there. Uh, that's just one of my concerns.
Okay. You do live in that area?
I rent property in that area. Yes, sir. I have rental property in that area.
Rental property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
You said something about Ray Street. Do you have rented property on Ray Street?
Yes, sir. That's where mine is.
You want your rental property torn down?
Well, I think it would be better to sell it commercial zone and let them come in and commercially buy that property. I don't think individuals need to come in and build property or homes in flood areas. I think the city needs to fix the drainage problems. If the city fixes drainage problem and they fix the entrance and the exit in that area, then yeah, we can allow people to come in and build new homes in there. But I don't think we need to change the zoning area to allow people to come in and build new homes because that's the first thing that's happening. That's happening all over South Longview. Every vacant lot in there is being redeveloped by individuals coming in, building homes in areas. And they're finding out that a lot of this area is flood area, but now you're stuck with that home. And you're hoping one day that the city comes in and be able to buy it. I would rather the city fix that drainage problem. And I have called in several times about the problem with all the water that's draining on my property over there. And I've asked the city several times. They came in and they dug a trench right there on one of my properties, and I didn't give them permission to do it, but they said it would help ease the problem, but that didn't do it. They probably put a 15-foot trench down my property, and it did not fix that problem. It's making it worse. And I'm concerned about individuals coming in, building up, and putting more houses in there, and pushing more water on the other people's property that in the area. So, no, sir. To answer your question, I would not want to tear my house down, but I would like to get that fixed first before we allow individuals coming in and building.
Well, but, I mean, we're just, we just do zoning.
Yes, sir. I understand.
We don't do drainage here.
Yes, sir. I understand.
I'm trying to figure out where you're coming from as far as the rezoning of the property.
Yes, sir. Like I said, I just think when you rezone and you make it a two-family zone, and that's going to allow individuals to come in and build homes. Am I incorrect? Am I missing something?
No, but, but, so you thinking that if commercial businesses come in there and build, they'll have the money to do?
Yes, sir. They'll be able to fix all that.
The proper things with drainage that somebody building a house?
No, sir. No, sir. Not that. But they would probably pay people fair market value for the property, and they'll be able to continue to develop that and use it for something else.
So, Angela, it looks like, I mean, we're dealing with three different zonings. So, the multifamily three currently looks to be where most of the actual residences are currently developed, and the, the very south part of it that's industrial might be more than what he's referencing because that does show in the floodplain. What is the thought process? But, because you're not going to be able to necessarily build in the floodplain.
Now, in some parts, I'm not, and I'm not the floodplain administrator, but in some parts of the floodplain, you can build in the floodplain. You just have to elevate your home or your padside. But parts of the, what we call floodway, you cannot build. Most of those lots that are zoned industrial are actually owned by the City of Longview because it is in the floodway. And so, we will never sell those properties or let anybody build on those. But it was within this neighborhood, so it would provide a good buffer between the industrial to the south and the residences to the north. And so, that's why we included those lots, even though we own them, and they're part of this subdivision as part of this request for the rezone. But most of this, if you look at our future land use map, there is, most of those lots to the south and actually to the west, or east, excuse me, is in the floodplain.
Okay.
And, but we, but the City of Longview owns a majority of those floodplain lots.
Does that help you any, sir, that most of those are owned by the city and probably won't be developed?
And that's fine, sir, but like I mentioned it to her earlier, I'm concerned because someone's already building a construction there, two lots down from my place, and I believe that's lot 15 and 16 on Ray Street. They put some iron rods in a lower area, but they're building it up like they're going to build it on piers and beams. And I'm like, that's a flood area. You getting ready to push more water on somebody else's property? And I know she told me, well, it's not approved yet for single-family, but I'm like, how are you guys able to do that already? They have put iron rods in the ground out there. They already built it up, and it looks like that's what they're getting ready to put there. And I didn't confirm because I haven't been able to talk to anyone in there yet. But if you drive through there now, someone has cleaned off two lots, and they got a label that's lot 15, lot 16, and they're getting ready to build something there. And that is a low area, and it's right behind where all that water is building up at. And it's not too far from our property. So, just concern, just concern.
Any other questions, Mr. Whitaker? Yes, sir.
Angela, how big is this? Give us an idea of the actual size of this piece you got here.
Uh, the acreage, I'm not sure. It's, it's a pretty large subdivision.
How many blocks this way and that way can we give?
Um, I mean, there's multiple streets. There's like, I think, what I, I think there's probably about eight streets in there. It's a pretty, it's a pretty large subdivision. It's an older subdivision here in South Longview.
Does any consideration need to be given to you guys taking another look and maybe what you're doing to the whole piece is not the right thing, or a different, uh, cut to it and split up into more than one piece?
So, rezoning.
I'm not a zoning person either.
So, when you say splitting it off into pieces like rezoning, I guess when, like I was saying earlier, we had looked at maybe just rezoning, not rezoning the city's portion, but then you leave the city's portion as industrial, although you can't develop in the floodway because that's, that's the properties we own. It would just be wiser for us to just rezone it. Nothing's ever going to be built on it, but it leaves a good buffer between us, the people to the north, and then the industrial to the south. You know, it's, if you look at the aerials, it's, it's kind of sporadic where all the residential is, the single-family and two-family. Now, there's two duplexes within this subdivision. They're right next to each other, and they're on the northern part of this neighborhood. But the rest is all, there's just single families scattered throughout it. So, we just decided to, that we thought, hey, it's a good idea to rezone the entire neighborhood versus a portion, because then you leave the other portion as multifamily, then somebody could come back in and do apartments there.
So, it's probably, you know, for what you're talking about, it's, it may, it may not necessarily cause an influx of people with the desire to build all of a sudden.
And it may not, but I'm concerned that it might, only because what they're already doing on Sabine Street. There's a lot of houses, guys, that were built on Sabine Street. And if you know, right before you cross that bridge on Sabine Bridge, that floods all the time. And I know that belongs to the city, but it's like, we built all those houses in there, and they built some of them up on the hills. And it's like, when it rains several days, you can't go through there.
Well, and with development, you know, our engineering staff should be looking at drainage and drainage patterns and ensuring that, you know, you down the stream would not be impacted, as long as you're not in the floodplain, which I don't think, where on Ray Street are you? Are you on the, like, over by the asphalt?
Yes, I'm on the asphalt, right down the lane.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you're kind of on the higher end of that Ray Street.
I'm on the higher, but like I said, up on the hill.
It goes down. Yes, it goes down. And so, you know, through, through development and through construction, they should be looking to make sure that that drainage, that they're draining either towards the street or in a certain direction that doesn't necessarily impact you. And if it does, then that you should call our offices. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in Any additional questions, any additional comments, commissioners? Hearing none, then I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Do I hear a second?
A second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Have one opposition? Take note, please. All right. Does pass. Regular agenda item B. Angela?
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z25-02, filed by the City of Longview, requesting to rezone lots one through three, new city block 190E, Calvin Norton addition from heavy commercial to single-family three, located at the southwest intersection of South Fredonia Street and Calvin Boulevard. So, staff is recommending rezoning these three lots seen here on the map. Currently, it is zoned heavy commercial. Everything to the south and to the east is zoned single-family three. And currently, there are three single-family homes on this property, and somebody's actually applied for a building permit, which has spurred on this request. They are wanting to renovate one of the homes on this property. So, staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses, therefore, the request does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
How many structures are on there, Angela?
Uh, there's three lots, and there's one structure on each lot.
Any other commissioners have any questions of Angela? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in favor? Anyone in the opposition, anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye.
I think we tied.
Wait a minute. It's two ways to motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got it?
Got it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Moving on to regular agenda item C. Angela?
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z25-03, filed by the City of Longview, requesting to rezone lot one, block one, Gay addition, lot one and two Orem's subdivision, and the entire new city block 124, with the exceptions, exception of lots seven through nine, nine A, 10, 11, 12B, the entire new city block six 14, with the exceptions of lots one through four, four A, five, seven A, and the entire block of, new city block of six 15, with the exception of lots 24, 24A, 24B, and 25, from heavy commercial to single-family six, located on, located north of East Cotton Street, west of 15th Street. So, this is a staff-initiated rezone request of properties located here, seen on this map. All of the properties are zoned heavy commercial currently. There are multiple single-family homes within this subdivision. Staff is initiating the request to make this subdivision and these properties compliant with the current codes. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore, the request does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Commissioners, any questions of Angela? If not, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience in support that would like to speak? Anyone in the audience in opposition? Please approach the mic, state your name and your address.
My name is Kevin Chomley. I live on 102 Chomley Street. It's not necessarily a opposition, but I do, but I just have a couple of questions, just to make sure that I'm clear of, of, you know, what's going on in this area. So, could you explain exactly what a single family six is?
Yes. So, single-family six is a single-family zoning district. We have multiple zoning districts, single-family zoning districts, one through six. But six has a minimum lot width of 40 foot wide, 80 foot deep, 4,000 square feet in size, and a minimum house size of 1,000 square feet. Those are all minimums. You can always exceed that. You just can't go below that.
So, in other words, that's the maximum dwelling that you could actually put on this?
That's the minimum.
The minimum.
Yes, it's 1,000 square feet. You can always exceed that. You just can't go below it.
Okay, thank you. And another question that I have, can, can a mobile home be added?
No. Mobile homes are only allowed within licensed mobile home parks. And that is, that is currently the way the code reads throughout the entire city.
Okay. And, and there was some little small issues that, not only that I have, but some of the other property members have. Can you get a building permit since it's been rezoned?
For, like, what?
To rebuild, you know, to?
It, so, as the zoning currently sits, I'm going to go back to the zoning map, it is currently zoned heavy commercial. So, if you wanted to renovate your single-family dwelling, you could not right now. If the zoning request passed, Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, and then the zoning changes to single-family, you could get a building permit to rebuild or build a new single-family home.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And another, another, another concern that I have of, of this area, the train tracks in this area. You know, there are, I have called Union Pacific on several, several times, and I must admit that they have gotten better. At 2:00 in the morning, when people are trying to sleep, and they just be rolling them horns, you know, and they'd be, be bumping them cars, you know, it, it is definitely a problem. And there's a lot of older people over there. And because sometimes when they come in, that whole block just get, you know, you can't go anywhere, right? You just have to just sit there and just wait, you know, until, until the train track, you know, have, have, have left. And, you know, and I have a concern that due to the elderly people over there, what if an ambulance or something, a fire truck, or, or a police car or something tried to get in there? So, I just think that area might need to be, you know, just, you know, just have some thought, you know, into that, you know, of zoning, you know, when we decide to, you know, to think about one day to rezone it and, and try to figure all this stuff out, you know. So, but other than that, that's all that I have.
Thank you.
Ms. Charlie, it's, it's, it's nice talking to you again, and I hope your family's doing well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Chomley for you? I see none. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. Did you get it?
I got it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Regular agenda item D. Angela?
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z25-04, filed by ETRH Development LLC, requesting a rezone of approximately 17.120 acres of abstract 71 D Ferguson survey, tract one, section two, from planned development multifamily to single-family six, located on the west side of Toller Road and J Hand Trail. The applicant is requesting to rezone a portion of this property seen here on the zoning map, from a planned development multifamily to single-family six zoning district. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses, therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
So, so currently, the zoning on this, it's across from a quarter park, I think's where the land is.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the current zoning on that would allow duplexes or?
The current zoning is a planned development for multifamily, so it would allow for apartment complex.
Apartment complex.
Yes, sir.
So, whatever. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
So, there's really not enough housing around it yet to, uh, this is a six, which you said is what, 40 by, what did you say?
Forty, uh, minimum 4,000 square foot lot, 40 by 80, 1,000 square foot home.
1,000 square foot home.
Yeah. And that's a minimum. They can always exceed that.
Any other questions of Angela? I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the applicant, Mr. Conway, if you will come and approach the mic and state what you're looking at, please.
Hi, my name is Brent Conaway with ETRH Development. We, we originally contracted this property to build a, what they call a horizontal apartment complex. And it, it came to, down to, we had to put sprinklers, and that's just an absolute deal killer for, for housing in general, just because of the cost. It just makes it prohibitive. So, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to save, save this deal. We want to, we want to develop the area to the north and, and build single-family homes there on, on, in SF six lot, the, we have a basic layout that it may be adjusted depending on the topo. There's some topo challenges there. But really, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to go from multifamily, you know, high, high density into a, a more broader single-family for this property.
What do y'all think the lot size and home sizes will be?
Um, home sizes will be, um, probably, usually, we start around 1,200 and go to 1,800 square feet, somewhere in that range. The, the lot sizes will be 4,000 to 5,000. It depends. There may be some that are bigger based on topo. We've kind of got a general idea, but we need to work with, uh, P and Z. But the first step, obviously, is getting the properties zoned so that we can move forward, you know, per contract timeline.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions before I dismiss him? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Thank you.
Did you want to approach the mic and say anything, Johnson and Bay?
Just, just answer questions, correct? Yes, sir.
Okay. We, we can do that. All right. Anyone in the audience likes to speak in favor of this proposal? If you, if so, please approach the mic. Anyone in the audience likes to speak in opposition? Please approach the mic. State your name.
My name's Gary Whitehorn. I live at 402 Biscayne Court, which is... My name's Gary Whitehorn. I live at 402 Bis Kane Court, which is not directly in the vicinity, but it's down the road from it. My, one concern I have is the, the west property line of here, that's, gets real close to that nature trail. How's that going to affect the nature of, of the nature trail? That's my, that's my question. If, if there's going to be development right there, then the, this nature trail, on one side, it's got a creek there, but it's got, you'll be backing it up to a development there. I don't know how close that is, and that's what I would be concerned about, how close that is to the nature trail and how that will affect those who use that nature trail. So that's, that's my main concern. I am, I am pleased that this is to be, to be developed as a single-family rather than multifamily because I was concerned about traffic increase with multifamily. But that's just my, my questions on that.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak in opposition?
Angela, is that nature trail through what's a floodplain here? What's marked as a floodplain?
Yes, yes. The city trail is located in the floodplain. We do not require, our code does not require that residential buffer, or really, anybody buffers up adjacent to a city park or city trail.
Well, real road, the jogging trail, it, it goes literally behind the fences of the little subdivision.
Most trails do. Most trails are directly adjacent to single-family residential.
And I live over in that area. I'm not aware of any issues from anything over in that area.
Yes.
Any other questions of Angela or anyone in the audience has spoken? Any other opposition? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Mr. Jones, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passed unanimously, as spoke. We're in item number eight, staff update. Angela?
Thank you. All items that were presented to City Council last week, they were both approved.
Okay. All right. This concludes the next meeting. We are adjourned.